Call this October thirteenth?
Fourteenth.
Fourteenth, October fourteenth. Board meeting of the Urbendale Community School District Board of Directors to order. And we will begin with roll call.
Hauser.
Here.
Kent.
Here.
Mead.
Here.
Me, Menke.
Here.
Ben Reiswick.
Here.
Williams.
Here.
Young.
Here.
Would entertain a motion to approve the agenda for the evening.
So moved by Kent.
Do I have a second?
Second by Hauser.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? It falls on the president this evening to read the school district mission and vision. This is item number three. Our district mission is to teach all and reach all. Our district vision is to, Urbendale will be a school district that brings learning to life for everyone. And the UCSD school board mission is to partner with stakeholders to teach all and reach all through governance of board policy and operating protocol. We'll move to item number four, public comments. And as we begin that, I would like to thank everyone for coming tonight. Board policy limits comments to three minutes per speaker. For confidentiality reasons, the board cannot discuss specific personnel matters. We have a significant interest in maintaining the decorum of our meetings, and we expect that members of the public and board will address each other with civility. The orderly process of the board meeting will not be interfered with or disrupted by public comments. Only individuals recognized by the board president will be allowed to speak. Comments by others are out of order. If disruptive, the individual causing disruption may be asked to leave the board meeting, and defamatory comments may be subject to legal action. With that, I would invite Mark Solomon to come up as our first commenter this evening. And Mark, if you would please identify yourself and provide your address, then Steve will begin the three-minute timer.
Sure, Mark Solomon, ninety-four forty-two Hammett Street Drive. I'd like to provide a CIML varsity athletics update since the last school board meeting. Volleyball, for the second consecutive season, we have failed to win a single set within any CIML match. That's a streak of forty-two consecutive losses. Boys golf, again, all blowout losses in CIML matches. We haven't won a CIML team match since two thousand seventeen, when we beat Fort Dodge, who has since left the CIML. That's a streak of forty consecutive team losses. Basketball season will be here next month. As a reminder, our girls haven't won a CIML game in nearly five years. All blowout losses, albeit upcoming board meetings all winter to provide updates. You should have seen my handouts. They show how our girls and boys varsity teams have performed in the CIML during their most recent seasons. The data is from gobounds.com cited as official conference stats on the Iowa High School Athletic Association website. The CIML has nine schools. And Urbendale finished in last place in eight out of the twelve sports that were reported. In the other four sports, we finished in the bottom half of the conference. These stats don't include girls and boys wrestling, but as the parent of a freshman son who wrestles, I can tell you we won a single conference boys meet last season. The CIML was established in the fall of nineteen ninety-one, thirty-three years ago, over a generation now, when the Des Moines metro area was vastly different. There were sixteen schools in the CIML when it formed. Only five of those schools remain today. Valley, Downing, Ankeny, Southeast Polk, and Urbendale. Eleven have left, including schools similar to us such as Ames, Indianola, Roosevelt, and Fort Dodge. They've been replaced by Johnston, Ankeny Centennial, Waukees, and Waukees Northwest, leaving the CIML with eight large, growing, affluent suburban schools and Urbendale. You've likely heard from administrators that a new CIML is in the works. It isn't. This is a stall tactic. The CIML will not cater to Urbendale, nor should it. They don't need us. These other eight schools aren't leaving the CIML, and they are the strongest eight athletic schools in central Iowa, if not the state. The whole point of a conference is to provide the right level of competition for our kids that will increase athletic participation. A conference that provides good matches, exciting games, and rivalries. The CIML provides none of that for our kids in any sport. This is exactly why those eleven schools left the CIML and why parents are demanding that Urbendale be the final one to leave.
Ten seconds.
Next, I would invite Eric Cannon.
Hello again, everybody.
Eric, if you could state your name and address for the record.
Eric Cannon, nine hundred and four Tanglewood Drive. First, I'd like to say thank you. Thank you for finally doing something and sending out the survey after the last board meeting, asking the community what they think on this continued issue with the CIML. We obviously have been coming here for six months now, ringing the bell of the concerns of our kids' ability to participate in a competitive environment. And trust me, I know you're sick and tired of hearing from us. So I'm glad that you've finally taken the time to now hear it from the community. In order to the survey, I wish I had been provided some more specific information like asking the parents, does your child participate in athletics? Considering the topic of this survey as the athletic conference that we're asking our kids to participate in, don't you think it's relevant to know if your child actually participates in athletics? Also, in providing the options for the conference affiliations between the Little Hawkeye and the Alliance, don't you think it's important to inform people what teams are actually in those conferences? I don't even get the fact that the original results were published last week were completely wrong. Our administration can't even summarize their own Google poll. It took a group of parents to catch a sarer, notify the administration after downloading and running the results for ourselves. So I do hope everyone here has had a chance to review the actual real results. To the simple and fundamental question, do I think that Urbendale's school district should stay in the CIML? Two hundred and one said yes, two hundred and fifty-nine said no. The results are overwhelming, and the consensus of this community is clear. Forty-four percent think we should stay, while fifty-six percent think that we should not. I would note these numbers include staff members, which were included for some reason in the poll. If you take them out, it's even more compelling at sixty percent. So the answer is clear, and the community wants change. That change is getting out of the CIML conference. Now it begs the question, what do we do? Where do we go? Based on your own poll, the overwhelming answer was to join the Little Hawkeye Conference with DCG, Norwalk, Indianola, Newton, Pell, and Osceola. Somehow, this information was also conveniently left out of the results. Do you really think the CIML cares about Urbendale? You know that the CML softball coaches recently voted to not reduce the number of conference games, but to expand them to play each team three times versus the two from the previous years, thus almost removing the opportunity for non-conference games. For context, went four and twelve in conference last year in softball. Also, one of our very best softball players transferred last summer to Waukees Northwest. Our girls just started the fall lead this weekend against DCG. Two ex-Urbendale girls starting for them. Do we want to continue to see these kids and their families leave Urbendale? So the answer in the direction should be clear. Listen to the people that elected you and the majority of this community that want to leave the CIML conference. We've been asking for months. We need to apply to the Little Hawkeye Conference now, not later, for admission into the conference for the fall of two thousand twenty-five. You need to vote to leave the CIML conference at the next school board meeting and notify the other members immediately. There's no reason to wait. The people have spoken. Now it's your turn to listen and lead and stand up for our kids. Thank you.
Next on the public comment agenda is Brandon Rinan. Brandon?
Rinan.
Rinan.
Sir.
Brandon, if you would please, at the table, state your name and address for the record.
Sure, Brandon, I'll give you a ten-second warning.
Okay, sure, Brandon Rinan, forty-one oh one one hundred and forty-first street. I appreciate you guys taking the time to listen to me this evening. I'll be brief. About a year and a half ago, I'm originally from Urbendale. I moved away, and a year and a half ago, I decided to move my family back to Urbendale to give them the same opportunities I had growing up, going to a good high school, good athletics, so forth. When we started looking at the Denver metro, our Des Moines metro area, you know, we looked at, you know, Norwalk, DCG, Urbendale, and we decided on Urbendale. One of the reasons why is because my kids are athletes, and I wanted them to play in the CIML conference. I knew it's the best conference in the state, and that's where I wanted them to play. Unfortunately, I was wrong. I was not wrong about the school. The school's been fantastic, and the coaches have been awesome. The teachers have been so great to my kids. I can't ask for anything better academically. Athletics, and yes, I'm old. But what I saw when I was here and to what it's now, it's a different animal. The CIML is a completely different animal. Where we might have one or two elite high school athletes, the team in the CIML, they have six or seven. It's just the reality. It's a numbers game. It's an absolute numbers game. They have, I mean, the average CIML team, their enrollment's seven hundred and sixty. They have seven hundred and sixty more enrollees than we do. I mean, it's just a numbers game. I understand it. CIML is the best conference in the state, and we want to be aligned with the best. I understand it, but the fact of the matter is, we're getting, we're not grown, they're getting bigger. And that's just the fact of the matter. I suggest one of three things. We leave the CIML, go independent until we find another conference, whether it be Alliance, Little Hawkeye, whatever it is. Number two is, we reduce our open enrollment from twenty percent to the other CIML teams, which is around one to two. Valley has, or West Des Moines has ten percent. We reduce that open enrollment, and we significantly will have a lot less students, and we will have to go down and get out of the CIML because we just, we just have to be in three A or four A. We won't be able to stay at that top level. And finally, the last thing is, we just don't do nothing. We stay where we're at, and kids will struggle, teams will struggle. But if that's the case, and if we stay where we're at, allow our athletes to leave
Ten seconds.
without the ninety-day suspension for going to another school. I appreciate your time. Thank you guys for listening.
And last on our list for public comment items is Jake Troja.
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 My apologies.
Jake, if you could give us your name and address.
Sure, Jake Troja, forty-two twenty-three one hundred and twenty-ninth street. My name's, again, Jake. I have a sophomore in high school, also have a second grader, and I had a graduate two years ago. A couple of years ago, we had a senior, an eighth grader, and a kindergartner. So that was pretty amazing. I think, you know, these guys bring up some good points from a perspective of a parent that has an athlete as well. I'd actually like to see us stay in the CIML, or at least consider that as an option. As mentioned, it is the best conference in the state. My son wants to play college soccer. We want to play the best competition there is. I think that is in the CIML. I think Urbendale has a lot of strengths that we need to embrace that would help us be more competitive. A few of those would be looking at open enrollment, which is just mentioned. I think maybe, you know, are we doing a good job selling ourselves as a small school but playing the best athletes in the state? I don't know. I don't know the inner workings of that works from the athletic side, but that might be a possible solution. Again, staying in the conference for us, again, just from my perspective for my son currently as a sophomore, is looking at recruiting and scouting and access to the best coaches that there are, the best facilities that we can get. I worry about traveling and long travel times, missing out on more classroom time because of that. I worry about driving numbers of the athletes away even further if we leave a conference where the best competition is. We've had those discussions in our house about maybe even leaving Urbendale if the CMI, if we leave the CIML, as we want to have the best competition for them. Couple of solutions that I would propose is working better with the city. I don't think we have a talent issue. At the end of the day, I think we have an access issue in driving those students to play, have the ability to play and access those opportunities. I'm wondering if we're driving students, more students to Urbendale. I mean, students who have an opportunity to play here on the smaller teams. I'm wondering if we're embracing our multi-sport athletes enough. Just trying to find some options for that. I also think, you know, my son, again, playing soccer, my daughter ran cross-country and other sports as well. You know, winning doesn't always have to be on the win and loss sheets. What kids gain from being in athletics, I think, is a huge thing. For those students that want to move on to the next level, I think removing an opportunity to play the best might hurt some of the students that are also staying here for that opportunity. So I just encourage the district to evaluate that trust administration, the team will make the best decision for all students, but would want to look at the opportunity that Urbendale has as a small school. I think it has lots of opportunities to attract students. There's not a better facility for schools this size that I've seen access to coaches.
Ten seconds.
So the school district to look at their strengths and play into those and work more collaboratively with the city on how we can have better programming for students. Maybe even middle school soccer would be great place to start.
Thank you. Includes the public comment section of the agenda this evening. Now on to item number five. Setting the public hearing date of October twenty-eighth, two thousand twenty-four, for the twenty-five, twenty-six, and twenty-six, twenty-seven traditional and extended calendar years. I would entertain a motion to set that date.
So moved.
Kent will second.
A motion from Hauser, a second from Kent.
Can I point out a piece on that? This morning, when we double-checked for tonight's agenda, there was an attached notice of public hearing that had the date of the fourteenth. That was changed to the twenty-eighth. We have not sent it to the newspaper yet, so it was pending your approval tonight. So I just wanted to make that clear that that was corrected.
Thank you. With the motion and the second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Item number six, setting the public hearing date and bid date for the UHS Chiller project. I would entertain a motion to establish a bid date of October twenty-ninth at two P M. to receive bids for the Chiller refurbishment project.
So moved by Kent.
Hauser's second.
Motion by Kent, second by Hauser. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. I would now ask for a motion to establish a public hearing date of October twenty-eighth, two thousand twenty-four, at six for the Urbendale High School Chiller refurbishment project.
So moved by Williams, second by him.
Daniel's second.
Oh, thank you, okay. Motion by Williams, Young with the second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That motion passes as well. Item number seven, the approval of the door security enhancement.
I would move to approve. This has been discussed many times, so I would move to approve this motion.
Can I ask a quick question before? I just, I know that one of the concerns was keeping track of the keys. Is there, can you describe like what we're going to do differently?
This project is not about the keys. This project is just about the locks themselves, but that's a process that Lauren and Zach are working through with the principals to have a better system for keeping the keys. Whereas previous years, there were a lot of keys issued that shouldn't have been issued, and we've changed that. Most of those doors aren't here. I mean, they've been changed anyway, so that's just work to continue.
Okay, thank you.
Kent will second.
Motion by Hauser, second by Kent. This will be a roll call vote.
Kent?
Yes.
Mead?
Yes.
Menke?
Yes.
Ben Reiswick?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Young?
Yes.
Hauser?
Yes.
That's seven no.
Thank you. Item number eight, the approval of the window blazing contract.
I would move to approve this. It's also been discussed repeatedly.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Mead will second.
Motion by Hauser, Mead with the second. This will also be a roll call vote.
Mead?
Yes.
Menke?
Yes.
Ben Reiswick?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Young?
Yes.
Hauser?
Yes.
Kent?
Yes.
That's seven no.
Thank you. Item number nine, the approval of the updated twenty-eight E agreement between the city of Urbendale, and this is a contract that involves Valerius.
And this was what the board approved back in, I believe, January for me to enter conversation with the city to update that at their request to exclude their use of the playfield. So that's what is finally been back and forth with legal, so that's what's before you.
Is there any discussion? Absent discussion, I would entertain a motion.
Kent will move to approve the updated city Valerius twenty-eight E agreement.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Young will second.
Kent with a motion, Young with the second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
Can I interject with just a note of recusal and abstention on that one for myself?
Apologies, Carissa. Item number ten, the approval of the school budget review committee allowance cost.
Administration recommends the approval of this request for the additional spending authority. Um, just has to be approved, um, to go before the S B R C.
I would move to approve this motion.
I'll second that.
Motion by Hauser, second by Van Reiswick. This will be a roll call vote, given the expenditure authority involved.
Manke?
Yes.
Van Reiswick?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Young?
Yes.
Hauser?
Yes.
Kent?
Yes.
Mead?
Yes.
I would move to bring forward the consent agenda.
I have a motion for the, bringing forth the consent agenda.
Kent will second.
Motion a second. Um, any discussion? On any of the items in said consent agenda?
Everybody goes.
No, I have none.
Sorry, Jenny.
No, we're not, we're
It's all good.
We appreciate the due diligence.
I was looking at Jason.
Hearing no discussion, I would ask for a roll call vote.
Van Reiswick?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Young?
Yes.
Hauser?
Yes.
Kent?
Yes.
Mead?
Yes.
Manke?
Yes.
Seven no.
All right. Item number twelve, superintendent's report.
Okay, just have a couple of things under here. First one is on the communication protocol. Um, we've had some question, um, about how we communicate when there's incidences at schools. And recently we had such, such a situation. So after taking a look at it, we've changed our protocol to include anything that's happening outside of the day, before school, after school, that will go to that building as well. There's two situations. We report out for a building because it is, it involves just that building with no effect to any other school in the district. Or the situation is large enough and wide enough that it needs to be controlled to the entire, uh, population. So we have a group of people who have told us, this is why we pulled back on some of the district level communication is because we have a group of people who have continuously told us, stop sending me all of this communication. I only have this one kid. I don't, I don't need all of this. But on the other hand, we have people who say there's not enough communication. I need to know what's going on in every building. So starting tomorrow, Dina has a parent square, um, message that's going to go out and it's going to give people the opportunity to choose your level of communication. We will still have incidences that are building specific, but we will also have districts. So for everything that's building specific, if you're somebody that wants to have that information, then you will get a chance to opt into a group. And then when building specific messages go out, they'll go to that group as well. So you will still get the information for schools that are not your child's school, but that will be your choice. And I believe you can opt out as, as you see fit to. You may think, okay, I thought I wanted it, but I don't. So that'll be something that's in the control of the parents. It's hard to please everybody at the level that everybody individually wants. So we thought this might be a better way that people can determine how much information they get. So that will start tomorrow. Um, the next item is chronic absenteeism and then Stephanie's going to come up. We've done some communication. We have some F A Qs. We've changed the website. We keep getting changes from Polk County, from different organizations. So I want her to kind of give you a message of where we are right now so that you can, uh, ask her questions if you have any.
Good evening. Excuse me. Stephanie Davis, Director of Student Services and Equity. Um, as you know, Senate File twenty-four thirty-five was passed this summer, which updated our procedures on, um, reporting on chronic absenteeism. Um, if a student is absent ten percent of the days, we are required to send a letter by certified mail to the family. Uh, at fifteen percent, there is this, an engagement meeting with the family, with the student, um, and with the school official. For us, that will be our facilitator, family outreach, our F F Os, um, in order to make a plan for student engagement within the school. Um, going forward from that fifteen percent meeting, every week the F F O checks in with, with the parent guardian, caregiver and the student. Um, whether that student is chronically absent that term or not. Um, one of the things to keep in mind about the interpretation of this law is that it states that it is by grading period. For us, that would be trimesters at the elementary and by semesters at the secondary. So our, our, when you look at the graphic, um, that's why the, the numbers look different is we have different grading periods. At the twenty, um, twenty percent absence, that's when we begin working. Um, we would notify at ten percent, um, Polk County, but then we would enter into the truancy process. Polk County has just sent out a little bit more information about how that process differs, um, from how it has in the past. Uh, but we are, um, looking forward to following all procedures with Senate File twenty-four thirty-five.
I think it's important to know, we've had some inquiries about, well, this would be excused and that would be excused. And there's a, a specific list from the state, from the statute that gives us exempt absences. And the bottom line is it, you need to be in school. So the state's pretty limited on what they're going to give us as an exemption. Funerals, for instance, were not exempt, but now
In the, in the initial guidance, funerals were not considered religious services. Um, in the updated guidance that we received at the end of September, that has been updated. So funerals, weddings, um, do count as religious, um, services that, that would be considered exempt. And I think the other important thing that we meant to mention is that we have a system of excused and unexcused absences. And that is totally separate from what the state considers the exempt absences. So that would be the legitimate medical, um, religious services, a student who has graduated, court ordered. And then in very rare cases, um, students who have I E Ps or five oh fours that, um, dictate their attendance into school.
And they're going to use this on our state, um, profile, the, um, Iowa.
School performance profile.
Yes. So it's not, it, it, a parent can check their kid out or take their kid on a vacation. That, I mean, we can't physically stop them from doing that. But that's going to feed into how our schools are assessed. So it's important that kids be in school. I think the legislator's intent was good. I don't know that it's necessarily going to change people's minds, but parents need to understand that we don't have a choice, so.
Could you fill us in on some of the communications that have gone out?
They're attached.
Parents, okay. For the public.
Yep.
So we do have, um, on our website, a chronic absenteeism and truancy information page. You can get there from our quick links under chronic absenteeism. It has all the details as far as how we intend to follow the law, including, um, frequently asked questions that parents can take a look at, um, to better understand what counts as an exempt absence, um, and also on how to report if your child is absent for the day.
So I'm going to guess that we're six weeks in and there is beginning to be, um, activity.
There, there is activity indeed.
That's kind of what I'm hearing from all over.
Yes. So, um, parents may expect to find, um, certified letters arriving, um, in the near future.
And it's not just us.
It's not just us.
With the increase of like the, of the tracking, how much more work is this? Do you, do you think, like, just an estimate?
Um, I think it's really important to note that we had a pretty robust system of checking in with students who are chronically absent. Um, this changes a little bit the way that we go about that and some of our, um, and the meeting, I think the check-ins is going to be um, quite a bit of time. As far as the certified letters that go out, we receive, uh, a PDF report. And so we, it'll be relatively easy to track to see if those have been received. Um, but that will be, of course, additional time and effort that, that needs to take place. I think it, it, having that open communication will be good.
And Dr. Daca, we had talked about this in one of our one-on-ones and we are, and we don't, do we not have to track this by minute by minute? It is just the
There was, there was some leeway where districts could do different things. You have some districts that are taking attendance multiple times in a period. You have some districts that are taking it multiple times in a day. It, that was not part of the, that's how that district interpreted it. So we interpreted it in a way that is similar to what we're already doing. It's just now you've got to go through this certified letter. You've got to pay for that. There's those kinds of things. And I think people, it's heightened awareness of attendance and how important it is, but we, we did not interpret it to be multiple times during a day.
Okay. And have you gotten any feedback from the Polk County attorney that these will be forwarded to at the end?
As far as, um,
Don't answer if it's not appropriate question.
Well, um, I'm not entirely sure how the truancy process will look. It will be somewhat similar to how it has been. I know they have set up a specific email address, um, to report when the ten percent letters go out. Um, so I think they are still in the process of, of learning how the law will impact their procedures as well.
Yes, I'd be curious as the year goes on and we see what happens with those excused by the district but not exempt, how those compare. I'd also be curious, like Josh mentioned, the workload on F F Os or school nurses excusing people out of school. Um, if we could get some sort of reporting on that, just for us to communicate to our legislators when, when that's appropriate.
As I read through the F A Qs, I'm looking at number seventeen about competing in competitive activities which require traveling to competitions. I'm assuming, and I'm going back to my time as a parent of arts kids, where spring break for those taking trips to California and elsewhere would start before break would begin, maybe by a day or two because of travel schedules, et cetera. I'm assuming that those, that those are still considered absences and not exempt and would therefore count toward the absentee requirement. So you would see, you could see a hundred vocal music and band students show up with an absentee, an, and, and absent mark on their report, right? Correct?
If they are competing in a school activity, school activities, um, are, would be considered part of the exemption. And number seventeen, this one is talking about competitive activities that are not school related. In that case, those would not be considered exempt because they are not associated with the school. However, we do really appreciate, um, the partnership that parents and teachers have in order to have students make things up. Sometimes those things happen. Yes, it would be considered, um, an, an absence. It would not be exempt if it's not a school activity.
Okay.
But it wouldn't, if it was a school activity and John's two sisters accompany them, theirs would not be.
Yes.
Correct.
It's the individual participating. And I, I understand parents can't leave kids at home, but it's, that's just something to remember.
Okay. I, so I was, okay, I misread seventeen or it wasn't clear to me that those were not school. Okay. All right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Stephanie.
Okay, now we start taking a look at some policies. There's, uh, three in here specifically that have updates to them. The first is policy five forty-eight. This was a policy that's been in place. Then the community will find this on the front page of Assembly where you can click on it and look at the policy to see what is being changed. That's a policy that referenced the use of, um, the title of it is transgender and students non-conforming to gender role stereotypes. Um, that policy was written prior to legislation changing. And to be honest, it just got passed. I, I just lost sight of getting it updated. Um, it didn't do any harm because law trumps policy every time. A board will not be able to enforce a policy that is against the law. But it was time to get this updated. You do have one comment that I've included on, that I received after we posted the agenda. And this, uh, anonymous person said, I don't believe these changes to the policy go far enough to ensure the district is complying with state law. State law requires schools to require a multi, multiple occupancy restroom or changing area to be designated only for and used by persons of the same sex. Person shall not enter a multiple occupancy restroom or changing area or a single rest occupancy restroom or changing area designated only for persons of the same sex that does not correspond with the person's sex. I think this needs to be added to the policy to ensure different buildings have a full understanding of the law. That was the only piece of feedback that we had received on that one.
Have we checked with legal, like, because it doesn't, like, in the policy, there isn't anything written about multiple occupancy restrooms. So have we checked with legal? Like, I mean, if that's part of what the law says, do we need to make sure that's part of our policy?
I can, I can share this with them. We just took out the part that was, not a lot of districts had a transgender policy. So we didn't have much to go by when we wrote the original policy. So we just took those pieces out that are now in contradiction to the law. But I can do that before we, um, do the second reading.
Okay. I would appreciate that.
Then you have policy six oh five D. And six oh five D, there were some small changes in there to bring that in line with the law. It was, I think, three words that were, um, semantics. Sorry, should have had this one pulled up too. And this was on the instructional program. And we changed, uh, social emotional character education to character education. And social studies, we added, uh, the parentheses, including instruction related to civics. That's a new part of last spring's legislation. So those are the only changes in that policy. And then the last one is a brand new policy, six oh six C. This is technology and data security. And, um, this is really getting in a handle on anytime somebody has an app, anytime you guys go on your phone or your computer and you download an app, you really need to be careful because you don't know what that app is going to do with the information that it uses. And we have to make sure our apps are not pulling, um, information that they should not, um, be sharing with our student informations. So that's why this policy is going into place to help, um, protect our students under F R P A and make sure that we pay attention to those components. I believe that one was Dre, straight from I A S B, right? Yep. Um, the next agenda item, too many windows open, sorry, is annual policy review. And all of the policies that are linked into that agenda item are the policies that the board is required by, um, the state to review annually. You don't have to, um, make any motion to change anything unless you have a question. And at this, the second reading, we can, um, do any changes. I, I mean, before we do the second reading, you would have to suggest them, but you also have regulations on here and you have exhibits. You typically don't get to see the regulations or exhibit because that's us saying, you pass the policy, here's how we're going to follow that policy. So annually, you'll get to see the ones that, I mean, you could go in the board, see it anytime you want after, but these are just coming to you for your review.
Just real quick on five thirty-five R two, there, there's all these sections that say insert school district name. Do we not need to do that until it's used or do we need to do that for our, like, that's what's in our?
Five thirty-five R two.
Five thirty-five R two.
That's a regulation, so.
I'm just wondering if we
Yes, it's just a draft. This is a draft because we didn't have this regulation prior. So this is just showing you what comes from I A S B that we will insert our name.
But it'll like, so when it's on
It'll say Urbainville.
It'll say, okay, perfect. Thank you.
There were a couple that we didn't have a regulation for, so we just added those as a new one.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, so. Okay, so the next item is our athletic conversation. Trying to go to the right, let me get rid of these windows, sorry. So the survey that was sent out, I know there was a lot of feedback on the survey. There was some mistakes, I wanna point out. Um, that's simply me with too many windows in my mind open. There was no intention to um. Mess with the data or anything like that. And I did put an updated uh graphic in here. I created the graphic for the adult survey, not the student survey. That came straight from the program. Um, we also received an email today, so um there was a concern from one of the. People who responded to the survey that their comments were cut off. And when I pulled it back up. Um, that's the one that you have in front of you. And uh Jen, um Rachel was correct. This is something that you had read before. But there is a portion in the one, two, third paragraph, all the way down to four, five, six, seven, eight, the ninth paragraph. And I've attached this into the uh assembly for the community as well. When it truncated to make a PDF, somehow those, those sentences and paragraphs were left off. I don't know how that happened, but they're in full on page one seventy-three um except for that piece. So these were included in there. It just was cut off. It's very small. So that's why it's so tiny because it was such a long comment. What I wanna say about the survey, there was um some feedback that it wasn't um in context. It didn't have statistical significance. And I understand statistical significance. I did previously taught statistics, so I get that. This was not designed to be something to say, okay, vote yes or no, here's what came back. This was designed to get a pulse on the community. If, if this had come back, say. Five hundred people responded and twenty-five people said they wanted to leave and everybody else wanted to stay, that would be a big cue. So this was not designed to give you information to make a decision. This was designed to get a pulse. So that I apologize for. Um, the survey was sent out on September. On September thirtieth and it closed on the fourth at five o'clock. Um, you got the corrected graph in there. We also sent it to the grades nine to twelve on the thirtieth. There was a snag in the eighth grade survey. Um, because they don't have parent square. Students in eighth grade don't have a group in parent square, so. That ended up going out later the next week. I believe it was Tuesday. Those student graphs came straight from the uh forms that it creates these. So you have all of the information on what sports these kids are playing, what grades they're currently in. We had a hundred eighty responses, which is frankly better than I anticipated students would respond. Um, similar questions to the adult survey. Oh, the title, there was a error not only on those two bars, but the title that I grabbed was the wrong title. So now the, I think the Urban Dale School District should stay in this Metropolitan IML. That's the correct title that was on the survey. Um, after the student information, what you see there are limitations. Um, both these surveys were set for one attempt, but if you have multiple email addresses. My household, for example, I could do six surveys. That doesn't mean that's six different people. That's, that's a flaw in, in the um access. Students was a little bit different because they had to use their school email and there's only a unique one. Um, there was nothing to stop this from being distributed out to people who don't have anything to do with the district. Um, again, I said it intentionally lacked context and parents were asked what grade their kid was in, but it wasn't clear that they had. A kid in sports. And that, I think, somebody pointed out was, was a good point. Considerations, there's so much that has to be considered. I wish it was as easy as just picking up the phone and calling the Little Hawkeye and saying, hey, we wanna come in. We can do that. I can make a call, but the, what I think is not being understood is. There are things that are happening in the CIML and other conferences that are not something that I can talk about publicly. There are things that are happening with other schools that is not my business to go in, spill the information from another board and another district. So that's why there's not been any extended conversations because there are things that we are waiting to have resolved. So that there are things that we can move forward on. Um, so any conference, even if they want to accept us, there's multiple facets that they have to consider. Can they take one? Do they have to take two? Do they have to keep it even? I, I can't even go into all of them because I don't even know that I know all of them. A concern was about scheduling your um, conference dates are how you get a majority of your schedule filled. This has been brought up before and I think it, some people brought it in the survey. If you're playing smaller schools in postseason, you've never been exposed to the bigger schools, those are things that you do need to consider. Um, what I need from you guys at the end of tonight is to give me your direction of where to go from here. What other information do you want me to give you that would help you make a decision? I did list the conference information for the CIML, the Little Hawkeye and the Alliance. On how many teams, how many fields, sports are fielded and what those dis, schools are. So they're all on page four. Um, I also gave you classifications, which are determined by the previous school year's beds. Which is the educational data survey at the state for your nine, ten and eleventh grade students. Football is the only sport that takes into consideration free and reduced lunch and they subtract forty percent of that number from the beds number. And football is the only one that's used for two years. So everything else, what we're putting in beds now is what's gonna be used for next year's sports. I also listed each sport for boys and for girls. Boys, for example, we're number thirty-six on the beds report. So in red, you see what confer, or classification we are for each of the sports. And then below that, I did the same thing for the girls. We're number thirty-six. So you see where we landed in all of those um. All of those conference or uh classifications, sorry. This is a lot of information. That information is really just to say, hey, this is what's there. I'm not making a case for or against. I don't think you have enough information right now to make a decision, so that's what I need direction from you guys to tell me what. What would you like to know beyond this? That would cause you to make a decision or help you to make a decision.
Is it possible to have the student survey results that we saw put on Simbly for other people to see as well?
They have, the student one, you mean as far as getting other responses?
Um, so the only thing that I found on Simbly, maybe I missed it, is just the four-page document. That shows like the extra comments, but not the full um student voting that you had sent out.
I thought I include, I can, I can add that.
I just think it'd be good to share that with the whole community as well.
I had asked for that. I think you put it in our.
So I didn't attach it here. I can do that, thank you.
Um, I wanna thank you for, for this first step. I think it's important. I also wanna thank. All the people that filled it out because I thought there were some really thoughtful um statements in that. Um, and I, some that I really appreciated and, and truly they were all red. Um, I think it's a very complex issue and I think it's very divided. And one of the things that I did for myself as I was reading comments is I. I went and I, I, I tried to see themes and what themes did I see a lot of people talking about. And um, one of them that stood out to me was that, you know, to be the best, you have to compete with the best. That was, that was one argument and, and a very valid point. And I, I heard that also in the coaches survey um quite clearly. Um, I also heard clearly from, uh, in, in many different ways, but that our size is, is what's making it really hard to compete. And I, I don't question that at all. I, I agree and it's very clear in the numbers. Um, and one thing that um also is very clear, and I heard this from people on both sides. The of, of, of their perspective, is that we need to do a better job of building our youth programs. And so I think that's something that's very important, that we need to really um take some action steps today to, to get towards. Um, so for me, I started with the beds numbers and I said, okay, you know. Here's Urban Dale. Let's look at all the schools that have an enrollment two hundred more and two hundred less and just. If our, if the world revolves around us, what would it be, right? Which we know the world doesn't revolve around us, but if it did, who would be here? And six of those schools within that range were in the Alliance. And so then I started to kind of focus in on the Alliance Conference. And I have three questions that I would like answered in regard to the Alliance Conference. Um, and one, um, and again, I don't know this firsthand, but if the rumors are true that Ames wants out of the Alliance Conference. I'd like to know that we've had a conversation with Ames to find out why. Why do, why do they want out? What have they found being in a different conference that they don't like? So I, I'd like to know that we've had a direct conversation with Ames. Um, secondly, when I look at the Alliance Conference and I see. Uh, Marshall, Fort Dodge, Marshalltown, Mason City, Atumwa and Waterloo East. Those are, they're farther. You know, that's gonna be a lot more travel time. So I know that it wouldn't, we couldn't come up with an exact cost, but if we could get an idea of what those additional travel costs would be. Thinking about sending every sport, you know, those further distances. Um, and then the third thing I'd like to know about the Alliance Conference is um, do they have comparable teams for us? Do they have ninth grade? Do they have JV? Are we going to have issues um, you know. Fielding full teams. And again, I, you know, I look at some of these schools and I don't know that firsthand, but I, I'm, I'm questioning whether they would have the depth. That we currently have here at Urban Dale. So then I went, um, because the, in the survey, um, clearly there was a stronger support for the Little Hawkeye Conference. So I went there and looking at the schools, um. I would, there's, there's kind of three things here that I'd like to focus on or hear from the Little Hawkeye Conference from, from myself. And one is a call to either Indianola, Norwalk or DCG to find out what they. Because I think those three schools are truly the most comparable to us in size, um, what they like about the conference. What, what do they see as the benefits in those conferences? Um, I, I'd like to know when DCG will outgrow us. I think they can probably project that knowing what their numbers are in elementary school. Cause I don't think it's gonna take too long for them to probably outgrow us with as much as has happening out there. Um. The second thing, and I don't know how to do this or how to ask this um. Or how we can ask it tactfully, but we're. We're, we're questioning whether we should be in the CIML because we're significantly smaller. If we went to the Little Hawkeye Conference, we would all of a sudden be the biggest. So my question is, why would Pella Christian or Oskaloosa or Pella or Newton, which is more than half of that conference, why would they want us? So how, how do, maybe if we could ask some of those smaller schools, how do they feel about playing Indianola? Since Indianola is the current largest school. Um, but all of these meetings are public record and so if they would. Google us, I, they may think, well, why would we invite you in? Cause you're gonna now. Be much, much larger than our school. So I think that's a fair question that we should ask them. And then I, I als, I think there's gonna be less travel than the Alliance Conference, but I also have the same concern about, do they have the depth? Of ninth grade JV, tenth grade teams. I think that's an important question to look at in both of those conferences. Um, I'm sorry, is any, I have just three more. I'm really sorry.
Can I just piggyback off of that just a little bit? Even Little Hawkeye is gonna have more travel time. And so my concern is time out of class for our students. We are first and foremost an academic institution. Um, and so that's a, that's a large concern for me. Along with the bus and costs and, yeah.
Okay. The fact that we don't have our own buses. And most of those systems do. So they use yellow school buses. We pay thousands of dollars in charters. And I s, I really think that has to be considered. The other thing that needs to be considered, and this is a systemic issue all across Iowa. But some of the people where I grew up in this tiny town that barely exists anymore, their kids are getting home at one or two o'clock in the morning. From competitions, which doesn't do anything to build the programming. And it's brutal for those kids. And so I, I really do think, looking at this as, you know. And we've had suggestions about, you know, open enrollment and cutting open enrollment. The bottom line is every student that we have brings in at least eight thousand dollars. And without our school, we would not need activities at all. So there are obviously a number of layers of concern. My primary question would be, who even wants us? I mean, we are focused on ourselves and saying, oh, we're gonna bestow our presence on this conference or that conference. And I think that's at the core of what you're asking, Jenny. Do they even want us? I mean, do they wanna get trumped all the time? I, I think that's a key bit of information. Um, you know, my first teaching job was in Pella. It's not that much bigger now than it was then. And, you know, they have success at their level, but um. I, I just think this needs to be, have a holistic examination of all of these considerations. But at the core of it, we can spend months. We have. We don't even know if they want us, right? I, no, I don't. So is this just an academic exercise? I think that's a key bit of information. I don't know how to get at that. But maybe they'd say, no way. And then this is done. True?
Right, yeah. It's not just, do we take Urban Dale or do we not take Urban Dale? What does that do for the conference? And if the board wants me to reach out and ask that question at this juncture, I can do that. I don't know if I'll come back with an answer. It depends on all of those other factors that are going on across the state.
That happens now is obviously public. So we, we've already been on TV. And so, you know, again, everybody has an idea of how things should go. Most of them are not in the same direction. Um, and so, yeah, those are my questions. And I'm sorry, Jenny, I interrupted.
No, you're good. I didn't, I, I felt like I was saying too much.
No, it's all good.
Um, a, and this doesn't impact any of the other conferences, but what would happen to our co-op sports? Uh, you know, like, I, I think that's fair because girls wrestling is, is new and starting and swimming. We have a nice co-op. And tennis, we do share. And so would that, would that change any of that? Cause that would maybe impact those um specific sports. Um, and then in regards to open enrollment, I, I just wanna clarify, it is my understanding, and correct me if I'm wrong. We don't have a choice to take open enrollment. It's not like we can't cap our, the law says we have to take, if somebody applies for open enrollment. The only reason we can say no is lack of classroom space and.
Or there's a uh program that we can't serve them in, which would be lack of program space.
Okay, or if, uh, if there's.
Or if they're suspended or expelled.
From another district. So those are the only two reasons we can say no. We can't say no because we wanna change our enrollment size, correct? Okay, and then I guess the last thing I would ask um is that we start a. And I know, I know you're already kind of working on this, but getting a, a structured outline of our youth programming. And, and ways in which our high school coaches are guiding and directing. And I know their job is big enough just doing what they're doing, but I think it's important that we get a committee formed with parents. Cause I, I think part of the problem is what has happened in the past is parents see. Well, I wanna play fifth grade tackle football and that's not available. So we're gonna form, we're gonna take all these Urban Dale kids and we're gonna go play here. And that's been happening for years. That's been happening since my twenty-four-year-old has been in middle school. So it's been happening a long time that groups of parents are, are moving out. And I, I would like if we could have um. An outline or a guide of here's what's available. So every parent could very quickly see. I have a second grader. These are the sports that are available. And, and, and I'd like to know that our varsity coaches are influencing. Some of those decisions and having an impact on that. And, and so if we could just kind of begin that conversation and that work of making that a little bit more. Clear of what's available.
And I, I have been thinking a lot about this, especially when the survey um came back. That is, that is a glaring piece that was repeated over and over again. And I don't think that our current community. Ed structure will get us there. So we have a new person coming on and I'm gonna have conversations with her about. What does that look like? Because one person with one assistant is not gonna take us where we need to go. So we're gonna have to figure out how to bring more personnel onboard that can get that vision moving. And do the assessment of what, it's gonna take a little bit of time, because she's not gonna come in and. And do the assessment of what, it's gonna take a little bit of time, cause she's not gonna come in and do it overnight. But that is something that was glaring to me in the survey. If nothing else came out about it, that was something that I think is pretty obvious.
It seems like that almost needs to be a community-wide through Parks and Rec and some of the other leagues that are going on. That all need to be kind of brought into.
Yeah.
The fold.
It's not something that we should be driving.
No.
By ourselves.
No. It should be a cooperative effort. There are existing programs, they're just not working together.
Right. I think that's a function of the size of our district. Again, when you look at, um, the other CIML schools. They have, uh, more fleshed out community ed program. Um, and then when you look at the districts outside of the metro, there is no community ed. So I think that's one of those things, we're sitting on the tipping point of what do we want? And doing it halfway is probably not adequate. And we either need to go all in and align with what we see in the CIML. Or we need to step back and let those other organizations step in. But I agree, that's to me, the number one thing that came out of the survey results is that we're lacking in developing our athletes. As a team and a community as they grow up. And that creates a shortage of, of athletes.
Thank you.
Yeah. I have a few more things I'll add on.
Yeah.
Piggyback. Um, you hit most of the things that I had wondered about, but. I guess speaking to your comparable teams and you talked a lot about ninth grade, 10th grade. I would say even at the middle school level, I know we have, um, on some like six teams of volleyball at, at multiple grade levels. And which schools can do that? I, I'm sure that DCG can, but can Pella do that? And how much playing time will those kids potentially lose out on? And then, um, along with the cost discussion, not just the busing and the travel time. I'm also curious if we can do some sort of gate revenue analysis on what that might look like compared to what some of these other schools. Might bring in on a typical, um, basketball game compared to what we're seeing now. And compared to what the other schools in the CIMLC, just to see where we fall. I think we're gonna find that we're on, on the cusp on everything, but I think it'd be good information to round up. And then, um, I'd be interested in getting more feedback from coaching staff beyond just the head coaches too. I think they have an integral part and connection to the programs. So that would be a way that we could build that out. And then the one that I know you probably can't answer, but that might be helpful to us and the community is. The theoretical changes to the CIML that we do or don't know much about or that can't, we can't speak about. I think it's, um, important for us to have as much information as we could about the timeline of what that might look like before we make any decisions. If that's a five-year discussion, then that gives us a different path forward now than if it's a two-year discussion. So as much clarity and transparency as we can have there, I think is probably one of the most important pieces. That's all I've got besides.
Thank you.
And we have just given our superintendent a very long. We would like to know. I.
I might not have it tomorrow.
I, I do not think that having it within the next, for the next board meeting. Or even within the next few weeks is probably feasible. Because we are relying on a lot of other sources for information, other schools, other conferences, et cetera. Do you think, Dr. Dhaka, that it would be reasonable however, for you to bring a timeline? After talking with act, activities to the board for kind of an expectation? So that we can do some level setting here through the next several months?
I can do that. Okay, the last item under my update is the IASB legislative platform. This is really for information purposes for you guys. The recommendation from ISB was to put this in, um, one of our end of October. Board agendas so that you could be prepared when we go to the state convention in November. But they've, I put the attachment for the public policy agenda and the proposed legislative platform. So if you just take a look at that and refresh yourself, that would be all that I was asking from there. And then the last thing before we go to the presentations is the students were, um, they did notify us today that they were both. Well, Catherine notified us that they were both absent. So, um, they were gonna try to come if they were able to get their schedule, but it doesn't appear at this point that they're gonna make it. So just wanted to let you know why they were not here.
Do you have any updates on the Karen Acres Playground? I know it's not on the agenda, but.
Um, we're set to do a, we talked about the week of the twenty-seventh, Nina, is that right? When they come back or twenty-eighth? Cause they're, they were on intercession.
Yep, this week too, and last week.
So next week they're back.
The exact date is still getting narrowed down, so.
I think it's done though, right Eric? I wouldn't say go run and play on it, but.
Yeah, they should have finished up the, um, servicing last Friday.
Yeah.
Before we get too deep into items that are not on the agenda. No, that's fine. And, and I, that, we, we will have updates coming. In meetings forthcoming, so on summer projects, so.
My six-year-old asks me every day.
Tell her soon.
Let's move on then to item number fourteen A. As we look at presentations for the October twenty-eighth, twenty-twenty-four meeting action items. Item A is the UHS course proposals.
Good evening, we're in the Child Director of Teaching and Learning. Uh, every fall, uh, we invite, uh, high school staff. To consider new proposals for courses that we might offer to our students ninth through twelfth grade. Um, and so tonight I'm giving you a preview of the courses that we're recommending. There were nine, I believe, uh, courses, uh, that moved past, um, that initial stage. And so a variety of different needs being met in these proposals. And I'm gonna walk you through each of those. So first is school to work. We know that, um, school to work is an important aspect of our students' opportunities. When they specifically get to ninth through twelfth grade. And these, this specific course, um, is two semesters. The first semester, as it shows, they would earn one credit. High school and then two credits that second semester, but with this course, there's also six DMAC credits. And then largely, what this course does is it prepares students to go out into the workplace, uh, to learn through work. Um, and so there would be a variety of opportunities, um, that would partner with our community. Um, and it would, um, both include internship and externships, um, apprenticeships. Uh, to be able to fly in our community and connect with, uh, the world of work. In terms of, um, state reporting. It's also important to note that part of the school performance profile will be the number of, uh, school to work or workplace learning. Work ba, work-based learning opportunities our, our students have. So, uh, the intent would be that this would be open to twelfth graders and year one. And then we would begin to expand that as we move forward. The other, uh, course that was proposed was project-based learning. And the names of these courses are still kind of, um, as a lot of it is developed once, uh, they're approved. So just know that, um, each of these courses may have a slightly different name once they go through, uh, the full development process. But project-based learning, this is a repeatable course that would be offered ninth through twelfth grade. And these are long-term project-based, um, uh, learning opportunities. That directly work with a business or corporation. And so that partnership with that business, uh, is ongoing. And it's opportunity for our students to engage in real-world experiences. Uh, to support, uh, needs that those businesses or, uh, work-based. Establishments might be needing. Um, and it's an opportunity for our students to learn again through work. And this comes with, uh, one credit per semester, but then three DMAC credits. The next course, uh, film studies, uh, would be sourced out of the English department. Because it would have, um, English standards related to it. Um, and it would not be a course where they watch full-length films in class. It would be short snippets, uh, and then they would analyze, um, both for the cinematographic. Pieces within it, but then also, uh, um, analytical strategies. That feed off of, um, those English standards. Again, you see a lot of detail in the course proposal. All of that would be streamlined and worked through the development process, um, should this course move forward. It does come with, uh, it's a one semester course that earns a credit, uh, but then three DMAC credits. The three DMAC credits come from the Humanities Department. Though in talking with other area districts, largely it is with, that have this course. Um, it is housed out of the English department, though there's multiple certifications that can potentially teach this course. And, um, a graduate work in English is one of them. So there is a level of flexibility for where it could be laid in, um, a department. Street law is a national program, uh, that really works at how do you take, um, law? And apply it to your practical life. And it's also related to civics. Um, and so this course was proposed out of, uh, Social Studies Department. And this is a one semester course that would have one credit. So that's that course. And then we have a host of unified courses. Each of these courses, um, serve a specific need. We have unified music, unified art, we have people PE. And this would add, these courses would kind of finish that out. So within a four-year period, um, our students that have significant learning differences or dynamic learners. Uh, they're partnered with a unified peer, um, which is one of their peers. That, um, supports the student in each of these courses. Uh, this gives them electives and opportunities outside of, um. And throughout their day in order to access a variety of different opportunities. So the goal would be, um, over the four-year period, a student would experience a variety of different electives. And then, uh, Human Services is in their program review per the state. The state has certain years and CTE programs, uh, that, um, a certain department goes through program review. And so in working with that department and their curriculum review. Um, we currently have Foods and Nutrition One, and then Food and Nutrition, Food and Nutrition Two. And then, um, Baking and Pastries. And so, uh, the thought is, is to continue a course very similar to Food and Nutrition One. But it would be renamed Introduction to Culinary Arts. And then we would keep Baking and Pastries, but we would replace Food and Nutrition Two. With the Jayhawk Culinary Academy, which would be bringing Pro Start One and Pro Start Two. Pro Start is a specific program, uh, that teaches both culinary arts. But then adds on, uh, management and the business aspects of, um, that it takes to run a restaurant. Or a food establishment. And so it fuses, uh, those pieces together. Uh, and so Pro Start One is the entry level, and then Pro Start Two is the extension of that. Those are the course proposals, uh, for this round.
Questions for Brandon?
I have a couple of quick ones.
Yeah.
And the first one, school to work, do the students find the jobs? Or are there, are like, is that part of our role? The students find the job and then?
It's actually part of our role. And so what we will do is have a database that has a variety of different opportunities. And depending on, um, kind of their interest and what they want to possibly pursue. We would help connect them to that opportunity.
Okay, okay. And then are, are any of these going to require additional staff? Or is it just shifting staff that we have, maybe taking on a few extra?
Yeah, uh, the second.
The second, okay.
That's, uh, that's where we are with things as we looked at it. Because as students potentially shift to want to take another course, it just opens up. Kind of where.
Okay.
Courses are. Uh, generally, we say there needs to be fifteen students for a course to move forward. In enrollment, unless it's a course that we have to offer and teach, uh, which none of these are. So offer and teach is a state requirement. There are certain courses we must offer and teach whether there's any students in them.
And last one really quick, sorry. On the unified, um, courses, I'm very familiar with people PE. So the dynamic learner is part of that, but then you've got their buddy. So do they, are they both, so is this, is this certain courses or just certain courses will be designated as unified courses? And then they find a buddy in that class, so they'd both be earning credit in that class?
Yeah, that's a great question. So it's, it works a little different than people PE.
Okay.
Uh, so unified art and unified music that we currently have. The peer partner, uh, that is buddied up with the dynamic learner, um, actually receives an elective credit. For participation in that, which is different than people PE. And one of the rationales behind that is people PE oftentimes both students are actively engaging in PE. Where a lot of times in these courses, um, they're supporting the student engaging in the activity. And so what we've done is we have aligned, uh, the grading to the employability standards for ninth through twelfth grade. Because many of those align to the work that they would be doing to support the student.
Okay, okay.
Essentially, the idea is, is that when they're supporting a student in art, it isn't the same, um, kind of. Expectation.
Okay, okay. Thank you.
Other questions for Brandon? Street law, sounds like it would be a film perfect for film studies class.
No full-length feature films.
No full-length feature films, just.
No, they sound amazing.
Yeah, no, they do.
Yeah.
Thank you. And then.
Yeah.
Continue on, on the item, uh, fourteen B, the extended year and traditional calendars. For the twenty-twenty-five, twenty-six, and twenty-six, twenty-seven school years.
Yeah, so, uh, tonight I'm gonna share with you the work that's been underway, uh, since last spring. I think it officially kicked off, um, the end of March of last year. Um, and before I go into it, one of the reasons why we've shifted to proposing two years at a time is our extended year. Uh, school, uh, the state asks or requires that we submit two years at a time. And so historically, when we weren't doing two years at a time, what sometimes happened. Was we submitted two years for, uh, the extended school, uh, year school. And then when we did the traditional calendar, we had to then resubmit to the state those adjustments. Um, and so this affords us the opportunity to kind of submit everything at once. And then, uh, kind of avoid those adjustments that need to be made, um, as we move forward. So just bringing back our culture of dignity and belonging, really when we think about this work, it really, uh. Folds in each one of those pieces. This has direct influence on teaching and learning because instructional time is part of, uh, this process. And needs to be considered. Our partnership with caregivers and communities, uh, the way the calendar is laid out, uh, has direct, uh, impact on. Um, our community and our caregivers. And then district policies and processes, um, can drive and support. So we have board policy that supports, uh, the pieces of the academic calendar. And then really our school-wide system and structures all relate or feed into and support. You know, what goes on in schools across the system. So with that, uh, there were several pieces of feedback that were, were gathered during this process. First of all, we've traditionally had a calendar committee that's made up of both administrators and teachers and staff within our system. We've also taken pieces of this to the School Improvement Advisory Committee. And then there were two sets of surveys that were sent out. One was sent out last spring, which was the first survey. And then we had a second survey, uh, that was sent out more recently. Um, and that gave, uh, whole staff and then our community the opportunity to see drafts. The opportunity to see drafts of both sets of calendars that were under consideration. So I just wanna review some state and local requirements. Uh one is is that we can begin no sooner than August twenty-third unless we're an extended school year calendar. Um and that's the date set by the legislature. Uh and but we can also start no later than the first Monday of December, so our window's quite large. And so I don't know if that's a remnant of old code that exists, but nonetheless, it's there. Uh so that August twenty-third date is really important because as you know how calendars work. The twenty-third starts to shift each year, uh which then influences when we can start. What that first week of school can look like. And we have choices to make every time, if we um don't go the, if the twenty-third is on a Monday. Uh and we choose not to start on the twenty-third because we want a partial school week. That then influences when we can um end the school year. Um and so also building schedules can vary as long as each account for that hundred and eighty school days. Or that one thousand eighty hours of instruction uh in grades K through twelve. And then the school shall be considered in session during parent-teacher conferences, so parent-teacher conferences. Um are one of the few times when students aren't in the building. It's really the only time when students aren't in the building directly that it counts towards our instructional time. And then um the last bullet is specific to that extended or year-round calendar. There's just some nuances related to um the number of days of instruction that must be present and then or number of hours. And then the period between those instructional days, you know, shouldn't exceed six weeks when they're out for the summer. So then internally, we have some fence posts, one is that our certified contract for teachers is a hundred and ninety-one days for new teachers. And then a hundred and eighty-eight days for um all other teachers. And then staff are required to have a minimum of thirty-six hours of professional learning uh per Iowa code. So uh that first survey that was sent out last spring. Uh really asked uh stakeholders and staff to identify their top priorities for the twenty-five and twenty-six and twenty-six, twenty-seven school year. Um and they were to rate their top um priorities and these are the top priorities. Um always looking at um combining across each of them. So they were asked to do their top three and it was really the top four that con- consecutively were rising to the top. And then we added the total amount um to get the percentage. So you can see both groups are very interested in ending the school year by Memorial Day. And then that actually parallels what was done two years ago, that same um idea rose to the top. Um stakeholders um look or prioritize kind of that partial week of school, that first week. And then um both staff and stakeholders um had something related to winter break. Whether it be the ten-day or um you know being out no later than the twenty-second of December. And then staff also had the workdays before the end of a quarter or trimester or semester. So in the drafting process, uh as the calendar committee worked together. Uh really, they were trying to figure out a way to end before as close to Memorial Day as possible. And what I'll tell you is next year, um it's not really possible, uh just based on where the twenty-third ends. And then where Memorial Day is in the calendar. Uh the following year, it is more possible just because Memorial Day is a little bit later um in the calendar in May. And so the other is, in both drafts, we begin winter break no later than uh December twenty-second, there's a ten-day winter break. And there's teacher workdays at the end of a quarter um or trimester semester. There were also ideas uh that we were interested in exploring and those ideas didn't um. Come anywhere but the survey that was done two years ago. So in the open comments of the survey that was done two years ago. Uh there were several kind of themes that rose to the top and that were consistently noted in the open comments. And so we used those to generate those ideas worth exploring. And so those big ideas were shifting from weekly late starts to monthly full days uh for teacher professional learning. Uh switching elementary and secondary start and end times. Early dismissal before breaks, incorporating elements of the year-round calendar. Additional non-school, non-contracted days to acknowledge additional holidays. And then during the day, parent guardian teacher conference options. And so you see um out of the stakeholders and staff that responded, you can see um where they were. I will say that we sent out the staff survey first. And when we got that back and saw where the staff um sat on incorporating elements of the year-round calendar. We chose not to incorporate that in the um stakeholder survey. We just didn't feel like we had enough um interest in that to send it out and then not go forward with it. So then the calendar committee spent some time exploring these ideas. We largely leaned into other districts that are already utilizing pieces of these ideas in their calendar. And then talked through what that would look like possibly in our system. Uh and so those were the primary ideas that we explored through the process. After we did um some exploration uh to kind of prioritize because we knew we couldn't do every one of these things. Uh because it would cause rather significant shifts in the way our calendar currently exists. Uh we went through a process to prioritize these um ideas. And to do that, uh members had sticky dots, each sticky dot um was worth one. And that's what's in the parentheses, so for example, the monthly full day professional learning days. Fifteen people stuck their sticky dot there, but then each sticky dot had value. So one sticky, one color of the sticky dot had um maybe six points, another one had three points and another one had one point. The rationale for doing that is just finding out, oh, there's fifteen dots there. Uh that's a little different than how much of a priority the individuals on the calendar committee. Um thought of that idea after exploring it. And so you can see the varying values uh that transpired based on um the dots. So the ones highlighted were then the ones that we decided to move forward. I will say that shifting elementary and secondary start times, you see that there is a level of interest in that idea. Um a couple of things happened, one, there were some other ideas that we felt like could be competing. And um we wanted to kind of separate that and set that aside uh for the time being. Um and so just really thinking about how much um how much change we really wanted to propose through this process. So the final priorities uh that we focused in on were the monthly full day professional learning days. Conference options during uh the school day. In addition to the ones offered at the evening and then early dismissal before breaks. So in both draft versions uh that were constructed. Uh what we did to prepare for the survey that went out to stakeholders and staff this fall was to. Generate calendars that included late starts, like we have now. And then a version of the same calendars with full day professional learning rather than late starts. But both of those drafts include early outs for parent-teacher conferences in addition to the ones offered in the evening. Uh so that would be a two-hour early out uh for conferences, uh for one of the days of conferences. And then early dismissals before breaks. And how we kind of thought through that is if there's a full week of school prior to the break. That that's when an early out would occur, so that occurs uh before winter break in the next two years. And then also a two-hour early out um the last day of school. So as I said, we did do another survey showing both versions of what this looks like. And what I can tell you and give you an overview of the numbers, if we were to eliminate late starts and replace them with full day. And no school days dedicated to teacher professional learning, we would have one hundred and seventy school days. We would have one thousand one hundred two student hours and we would have fifty-six hours of professional learning. That would include the two comp days for conference time, which is the eight hours that. Teachers do outside of their contract time for conferences twice a year. Um it would have the one flex day that we introduced uh two years ago and that flex day. Um staff have the opportu- or teachers have the opportunity from August to um kind of the beginning of pre-service. Uh to choose when they work, uh to do classroom preparation as they see fit. It would have four pre-service days, which is our current um structure. One post-service day, which is really after all the students leave, uh preparing uh their classroom. And spaces for the summer uh to be cleaned and then uh two workdays, one for each um kind of. Between the trimester and uh the first quarter and then one at the semester. And then eight professional development days uh that are um spaced throughout the calendar. Which is equal to the hundred and eighty-eight teacher contract days. Version two, which is what our current um orientation is, which is late starts on every Monday. Um we have a hundred and seventy-seven student days, one thousand one hundred six student hours. And fifty-six and a half hours of professional learning. And then that middle chunk is really the same in both version, which then equals um the hundred and eighty-eight teacher days. Minus the professional development days, there's only one in version two. Which is the day that occurs in February currently. Um and that one is part of the eight that you see in version one. So as that survey went out, um we had six hundred and twenty-four stakeholders participate this time. And you can see that forty-three percent uh forty-four percent roughly uh preferred version one. And fifty-six, fifty-seven-ish percent uh preferred uh version two, which is maintaining the late starts.
Did you hear any feedback from the stakeholders and the reason that they would prefer one over the other?
You know, I did not, um and we didn't have an open response in this either, it was more set up like a poll this time. Um but I did not hear anything specifically. Uh and then uh for staff, you can see that sixty-eight point six percent uh were interested in shifting to no late starts. Uh instead, full day professional development days and thirty-one point four percent um chose version two. Which is uh the current orientation of late starts on Mondays. And then when you combine those results, uh both stakeholders and staff, you can see just where it sits. There's fifty-two point eight percent with version one and forty-seven point two percent with version two. So with that, the calendar uh committee met uh after that poll was done and reviewed. And had about a forty-minute discussion, pushing and pulling on each other um about, you know, what would be better. Uh and I, I what I'll say is, it it felt like at the start of this process. Um there was a real interest in shifting especially uh from those late starts to a full day. Uh but what I would say is by the end, it was very close. And our goal was after that, uh there wasn't like a official vote. Um there was a process to come to consensus, uh because the idea is is that. Um while we might not agree, everyone agree with uh which way, uh the goal is to come to consensus. And so by the end of that, the recommendation uh that we landed on was uh version one. Which is no late starts and shifting to those full days of professional learning. So what questions might you have?
Um I just have a question about, seem to struggle to staff adventure time for before and after-school care.
Uh huh.
So what are we going to do to overcome that for these whole days off? Parents having to take entire days to be home with their kiddos.
Yeah, so there were a couple of thoughts that went into that, where we placed uh those full days. Um a lot of times, we tried to place them close to an existing um break that already existed. I know that doesn't solve uh if you need to go back to work or need to work that day. But we did attempt to um kind of place them near an existing break, so it wasn't just this all of a sudden uh day that occurred. Uh so that's one thing that was considered through the development. The other piece is that we have worked with adventure time on those full days uh for an additional fee. Um they do believe that they can offer more spots on those full day. Um and one of the creative ways that's been thought through is just we have um associates that would be off that day. That work in our schools every day, it would offer, um they would be offered an opportunity to support additional spots. For students that may need um care on those full days.
My day also suggests our high school students that are in for the teachers, if they're off school too, if they're taking that course for.
Yeah.
They might be a natural one to recruit.
Yeah, that's a great thought. There's some DHS requirements, but I think if we can think through how to fold those in. That would definitely be a possibility. Uh the one caveat with that is if on those early outs, uh it doesn't appear that we would be able to offer. Additional spots if you're not already in before and after care through adventure time. So the early outs that are present or proposed for conferences for those additional conference times. Or um before winter break or that last day of school.
You know that elementary and secondary trimester versus quarter, was there any thought given to making those early out days for conferences the same? Even though they're not on the same grading for families that look for that simplicity?
Yeah, there was, um I think there's a couple nuances uh within that, one is translators and being able to. Um provide translation to conferences across our system, which is historically why conferences haven't lined up. Is making sure that um all of our families have access to that translation, so that was. Uh thought through, um and where we landed was uh to maintain kind of that separate orientation. Though did look at many districts and how they've kind of found a middle ground um and placing it so it's on the same time. And I also think as this year, we're trialing um virtual conferences. Um as an option uh for families, they can have in-person or virtual. Um that may free up kind of what that looks like in the future, uh to maybe think about, can they? Um can they occur on a similar day or timeframe?
Was there any conversation, I'm gonna pick on October of twenty twenty-five. On the tenth, you have a uh teacher professional learning and on the twenty-seventh, you have a teacher workday. Are those um rigid and and I guess what I'm thinking of, like would, did you talk about having a half-day of professional development and a half-day of workday? Just thinking, uh just it might teach your brain of.
Yeah.
If we're learning something, sometimes it's nice to meet with your team in the afternoon to say, how could we apply this? And rather than doing a full day, uh you know, I don't know if, are those flexible or that? Is it gonna be rigid of this is professional learning, this is work?
Yeah, well, we need, there's kind of two answers to that question. One is uh we try not to get ahead of ourselves in what those days would look like.
Okay.
I think it's really important for us, whatever direction, we're recommending the full day. Uh but if we went that direction, uh to bring together a team of people, uh including teachers. Uh to really think about what do we want professional learning to look like as we move forward. Um team collaboration is a part of professional learning. And so I don't wanna paint the picture that. And so I don't wanna paint the picture that those eight days are going to be full. Days of sit and get, they aren't currently, uh, there are days designated for team uh collaboration. During late starts. Um, and so we would want to make sure that we're thinking about adults as learners. And really thinking about what the evidence says about professional learning, um. To think really about what those days could look like. Um, I think largely what we've heard from staff is that it's really hard on Monday morning. Uh, to be in a learning orientation for ninety minutes. And then within a ten minute, fifteen minute turnaround. Uh, be ready to welcome all their students and then be able to maintain what happened. Um, and so, just thinking about their own, their, their mind is on their day. And what they're about to go do with students, um, and so just being really thoughtful about that, even on those full days will need to continue. To be important.
I think the other effect of, of students of taking them out of their routine, one day out of five.
Yeah.
Uh, is difficult.
Yeah, I think it's, I, I don't wanna speak for all staff, but I think even with our staff, um, those days tend to look different. Uh, just because of the delayed start.
Uh, I put a question in um earlier, but in terms of, when this was discussed about two and a half years ago. Uh, the comment from administration on why they were staying with. The late start versus going to fully then wa- was some of the implications of the best practice at the time. Uh, and one concern that was brought up that I think is valid is the potential for outside of contract meeting times because of the less frequent. Do you still have that concern, are you not concerned about that? I don't wanna put that on our teachers.
Yeah, I, I also don't want to do that and I, I don't think that that's the intent. Um, though I appreciate the feedback that was given previously around that. I think that there are a couple things that have changed since, um. You know, that, our landscape has changed, the A A, our access to getting support from A As is different in terms of. We can purchase half day or full day increments. Um, and it's really hard if we need somebody for ninety minutes, we're really reserving them for a full day or a half day. Um, and then, uh, we're filling the other duration of time. Uh, with using those people any way we can in terms of maybe collaborating with them. But being able to consider how to use them for half day or full day and fully use them with staff would be one benefit. Um, the other is, is I really think we have to think about um our current orientation, a limitation we have is. Uh, bringing all of first grade together. Um, doesn't happen as frequently because bringing all first grade teachers to a central location. That starts at eight, but we have to dismiss them uh by nine to get back to their building, into their parking lot, into their school. Um, so it's really limited our ability to collaborate across the district, now there's been some. Virtual meetings where we can um try to pull everyone together virtually um on those days. And largely what tends to happen is it's just harder. Um, one voice can be on the screen at a time or we break them into breakout rooms. Um, and it just isn't the same uh feel or connectedness, so offers that limitation as well. Uh, so we will definitely need to think about uh what that looks like, um, but again, what I would echo is. There are other things that happen in our system that relate to professional learning. Um, that's more job embedded and coach supported, um, and team driven. Uh, that is in addition uh to these days. And if we can offer portions of those days for that longer team collaboration, that will definitely benefit. Hopefully benefit uh the staff in our system. So what I would say is, um. It could be, but that isn't the intent and it's not something that we would want to see happen. It's hard because we haven't fully flushed out, uh, largely because I didn't wanna get ahead of what decision. Uh, would be made.
And I know. From my chair, I, and I realize that there are a number of stakeholders and folks that we consulted on this to get their feedback. And we have to listen to that, but at the same point, recruitment and retention is always something that we are concerned and talking about. And so when nearly seven out of ten of our staff are saying. Hey, we like the full day opportunity instead of the early of the late starts. That's, that's a pretty compelling argument and seems like a low bit of, a, a bit of low hanging fruit for us. As a board to think about what does our staff need and what do they want.
Thanks for your work. Okay, I'll make a motion to go into closed session per Iowa code twenty one point five. I, to evaluate the professional competency of an individual whose appointment hiring. Or discharge is being considered when necessary to prevent needless and irreparable injury to that individual's reputation and that. Individual requests a closed session.
I have a motion, do I have a second?
Need a second?
Motion from Howser, second from Mead, this will be a roll call vote.
Williams.
Yes.
Young.
Yes.
Howser.
Yes.
Kent.
Yes.
Mead.
Yes.
Menke.
Yes.
Ben Radwick.
Yes.
Board returns to open session at 9:03 PM on October 14. At this point, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.